Better our schools, to make it better for our students, for our teachers, God. I know that they have a very tough job. And I pray that you would just give them peace as they make decisions. Whether that's peace with parents, or peace with teachers, peace with students, God. I pray that your peace would lay over them, God. I know this is not a very fun job, or very easy job at times, God. But it is very rewarding to see what it is doing in the lives of each and every one of these students, and one of these teachers, God. I pray that you would give them discernment as they make decisions tonight that could affect the school systems, whatever it may be. I don't know, Lord, but you do. You know all things. We thank you for everything you've blessed us with, that you will continue to bless us with. Keep this meeting safe, help it to maybe not go too long. But keep everybody wise and alert. We pray this on your name. Amen.
Thank you, Caleb. I call to order and welcome you to the Bradley County Board of Education Regular Meeting for June the 13th, 2024. I would like to recognize our county commissioners and thank them for being here. Denny Collins, Tommy Ledford, Mylin Blake. And did anyone come in late? Okay, thank you for being here. Our pledge tonight will be led by Nancy Kason.
Attention, salute, pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that number 12 on our agenda be moved down to number 16, and that we also include in that the letter of intent for Dry Valley property.
Okay, we have a motion to move item number 12, and then to add a letter of intent for Dry Valley property. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Bryson. Any discussion? Miranda, would you call the roll?
Yes, Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero, no, motion passes.
Our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item to pull from the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Ms. Lee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Kason seconds the motion. Any discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero, no, motion passes.
Our next item, persons requesting to address the board on agenda items, Ms. Refner.
No one's had it.
Thank you. Our next item, Director of Schools report, Dr. Linda Cash.
There's a lot of really positive things going on in the school district that we will talk about it other times. But my biggest announcement to the board and to those in presence is that Susan Wilcutt has announced her intent to retire in January. And we just want to tell her how much we love her and care for her. And I'm still working on reversing that. But so far, she's not moving. So I, from the bottom of my heart, I know we've still got a long way to go. But I thank you and appreciate all that you do. And we're going to have a huge time as we move toward this. And then also to announce that I've asked Ellen Smith to move into that position in January as an interim position. She's been training and doing well, and is endorsed by Susan and by me. So I think that we will have a smooth transition. But at the same time, if Susan so happened to change her mind, we would hold that until a further discussion. But, and if there is anybody who would like to address Ms. Wilcutt, I think today would be a great time. I needed to announce that because we're kind of on pins and needles about making transitions and doing things, so.
I just want to say that I've worked with Susan for a very long time. And I have always found, not only is she knowledgeable, but she's very welcoming when you come into her office. Always willing to provide information and to help you, and definitely a person of integrity. And I want to say thank you so much, Susan.
I'd like to say something, too. I got the privilege of going high school with Susan. And one thing, you always know that she loves the Lord and loves people, and has huge character, and is a person of her word, and has our school system, Rad High School, the Bearets, and her family have made a huge impact in this community for years. And we love you and respect you, and thank you for all of your impact and influence in a lot of people's lives.
And I think, Mylin Blake, did you have something you'd like to say?
So, over on the county commission, especially on the finance committee, Susan brings your amendments over to us. And I think there's not one time where she hasn't answered our questions, explained what's going on, so that we're in sync with you guys. So she does a great job representing you guys on the financial side, and as the school board, and the school system as a whole. Congratulations on retirement. I wish you all the best, and she's going to be tough, Ellen, I gotta admit. But I told her one time, in fact, usually around this time, was it May or something, you guys have to have your stuff done. And I'll make that phone call over there, like, Susan, you got a minute or two? No, and it's going to be about an hour. And we'll sit in there and go through all the kind of stuff in there. So, thank you, guys. Thank you, Susan. I appreciate everything you've done, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to say that.
Mr. Taylor?
Go ahead.
You go ahead.
Well, I don't think there's any doubt, you know, how I feel about Ms. Wilcutt. When I came on the board, I was one of those that didn't come from an educational background. And Susan was always willing to dumb it down for me. And she made sure that I understood everything that I needed to know in the most clear fashion. I've never met someone that has the integrity that you have. There are some jobs that, they retire, you hate to see them go. This is going to be a very, very hard job to fill your shoes. Because you, the type of job that you have takes not just doing your job, but being able to interact with everyone throughout the district with grace and compassion. And that's not always easy. But you do it, and you do it well. So between now and January, I'm going to be praying, let you change your mind. But thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, so I'm also one of those that has Ms. Wilcutt on speed dial. I asked her a lot of different questions, and she's always been very willing and eager to answer any and all questions, and to really go above and beyond in explanation, and making sure that I have a full understanding of it. And so I thank you very much, and we're certainly going to miss you. If you do change your mind, we would certainly understand. And Ellen, I need to get your number later.
Mr. Bryson?
I think you've done a great job. I can remember, I hadn't been on here long, and I thought I knew everything. And I was asked about money. I said, why can't we do it? We've got more than enough money. He said, well, we've got the money right now, but you never know what's going to happen. I said, what's going, what could happen? And I mean, we got this, whatever. He said, I'm telling you, you could do it. If you got, you could do it. But we need to keep money in reserve. That was the year before the pandemic. And we were able to get through the pandemic, not with ease, but we did all right. And I think not all of it, Dr. Cash's leadership, and her staff, and all the teachers and everybody. But I think you're knowing, don't spend money you don't have. Or you might need to have some rainy day money. And that's the one thing I remember, is how you took care of the taxpayers' money, and you took care of the Bradacassas. And I appreciate that.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I'd just like to say, I think Amanda said it better than I could about dumbing things down. Susan is not a dumb person. And for someone of her intelligence to bring it down to my level when it has a dollar sign in front of it, was not the easiest thing in the world to do. And she has done that. She's been faithful in answering. And she makes the best chocolate peanut butter. That we are the beneficiary of at every retreat. So my question is, does anybody else have that recipe? But I do wish you a grand life in retirement and enjoy. But we are going to miss you.
Three grandbabies now, right?
I want to say something. Ditto to everything that everyone said. They said it very well. And I just appreciate your breadth of, you're just so full of sunshine. I appreciate that always.
And so to say the least, we love you. We will miss you. And if you change your mind, please let us know.
And to all retirees, if you want a sub, we can sign you up.
It's very enticing.
Dr. Cash, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am, that's all I have.
Our next item of business, classroom management web filtering solution. Scott Webb?
Yeah, we're multitasking right now. I'm here today, good afternoon, first of all. Good afternoon, I'm here today to ask for approval for a three-year contract with Blocksi as our classroom management and web filtering solution. Do you have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can you just maybe explain a little bit about what Blocksi is, and kind of how that works?
Well, we have to, by law, have to have some sort of content filtering. What this does is give us an additional layer of filtering that we can push directly to student Chromebooks. So it's going to give our principals more ability to say, I want this blocked. This is okay for educational use and that. So it's much granular in that fashion. And the, we looked at about three or four different platforms. And our feedback from our teachers was, this one was by far and away the best one. So not only, it takes a combination of two things we've done in the past, with Senzo and with Bark. And I talked to this board in the past about Bark. What it does is it combines all those into one integrated platform. So we have the classroom management piece that teachers will be using, the alerting that our principals and administrators will be learning, and a parent's side that's going to give parents unprecedented ability to control what website students can see at home on our Bradley County school devices. And they can even turn off the internet if they want to do that. So it's going to give our parents a whole nother avenue to be able to control devices when they're at home.
Is this in addition to something that we're already using, or is it in place of?
It's, it's an expansion of what we're currently doing. In a confined format.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of Blocksi as the new classroom management and web filtering solution for Bradley County schools?
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Mr. Bryson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Kason. Any further discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero, no, motion passes.
Thank you. Our next item, amendments 2023, 2024, the 142 federal funds. Susan Wilcutt.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. Before I present these, I'd just like to say thank you so much for those kinds of words. And I don't want to go into a lot of things right now. I'm sure I'll be addressing you before I leave. But the one thing I do want to assure you of is that one reason that I turned in, I guess, my intent to Dr. Cash so early is because I have every intention of doing everything in my power to make this transition as easy as possible. I've always loved this district, and that is not going to change. And so, until the day I walk out, I'll do everything I can to make it as good as I know how to make it, and to help my department prepare for this transition. So that's all I'd like to say right now. Thank you very much.
And Susan, that's what makes you so special. So thank you.
Okay, so I'm coming to you tonight, and I know everybody's tired of talking about this because this goes right back to what we just talked about at the work session, about these documents that come through that really mean nothing to you, but we're going to get them approved anyway. So the first one is our federal amendment summary. Okay, so basically, it's every change that's been made to any federal budget throughout the entire year. And basically, only thing it's going to really tell you, you can see the amount of change that has happened. But it's really not going to give you a detail as to what those changes were for. If there is anything in particular that you want to know, ask us, we'll get you the details. But this is, to me, our audit requirement. So I'm asking you to approve this amendment summary.
Do I have a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 budget amendments for federal funds 142?
I make a motion to approve her request.
Motion by Mr. Bryson, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Any questions, comments?
I would like to request on this, since it doesn't go into the plan that we were talking about, the E-plan, that has the more detail in that. Can you provide that to us?
Absolutely.
I know it'll be after this, but.
Yes, absolutely. Would you like for us to email you that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, we'll email you that.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero, no, motion passes.
And of course, Ms. Wilcutt is staying with us for the next one. 142 federal school budget, fiscal year 2025.
Yes, ma'am. And this is akin to what we just approved. What you just approved were the changes that went on through this budget year. And what I have, what you have before you now is a summary of the federal projects summary for FY25. And we also need your approval on that one.
Any questions?
I make a motion that we approve federal school budget for year 2025.
I have a motion by Ms. Lee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryson. Discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero, no, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
And if you decide not to leave, it'll be this quick every time.
I would need that in writing.
Okay. The next item is executive approval for 25 capital outlay, fiscal year 2025 capital outlay. And this is a motion that typically occurs due to the fact that we do not have a meeting in July. And if we have any capital projects that where there are changes or things that come up, then the executive committee can make that approval. And of course, with your notification, if that does occur. Dr. Cash, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, this, basically, they come in so fast. And, because we only have a year to get everything accomplished, this allows the process to continue and to move forward quickly. The projects you've already approved, the funding you've already approved. So this is just, if there were any changes or anything that had to happen, we could use executive order and keep moving.
Do I have a motion to grant authority to the executive committee for approval of any fiscal year 2025 capital outlay projects?
I make the motion that we do that.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Kason. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lee. Any questions? Mr. Taylor?
I was just going to ask, is this kind of like a blanket approval for any change that comes through, or?
Within the budgets that are a lot. In other words, you've got a list of the projects, and all of those are estimates. So they may change, they may go up, they may go down. We stay within the whole budget. We don't go outside of the budget money that you have approved. But it just allows us to continue. If a bid came in high or low, or whether, it just allows us to keep moving.
And it could avoid a special called meeting.
Yeah.
Or that sort of thing. But we have also provided notification, correct?
Yeah.
For executive.
And who makes up the executive committee?
Dr. Cash and the chairman.
Okay.
Any further questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero, no, motion passes.
Our next business item is to establish priority of elementary expansions. Corbett Drew and Kyle Page?
Just saying, Susan never kicked me. We discussed everything in the work session earlier today. And really, I think this agenda item is focused on establishing priority between the proposed expansions at Parkview and Waterville. Was there, are there any questions, or?
And I think we do, we did have a recommendation from Dr. Cash.
My recommendation is to prioritize Parkview as the first expansion, and to review expansions after that as needed in regards to looking at a future school on Blue Springs. But our first priority would be, I'm sorry, Parkview. Sorry, Steve.
Do I have a motion to approve the expansion of Parkview Elementary School?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the expansion of Parkview Elementary School.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bryson. Discussion?
The only discussion I have is just, I just, up until this work session, we were talking about an immediate need at Waterville for current students. And up until we had discussed the possibility of adding the new school to alleviate that issue. You know, that was more so my issue, because that problem's not going away. And we were discussing building for a potential need later. I feel like we need to address our immediate needs first. Now, if Blue Springs is going to be the solution to alleviate that immediate need, because those are all county students, then I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that we're not doing this in reverse of putting future needs above immediate needs.
Any other comments or questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero, no, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that we have Cindy Slater, County Commission, that just came in the door. Welcome. Our next item. We moved, didn't we? We moved number 12. The next item, bids. We're starting with Ocoee Middle School food service equipment. Emily Brown?
Yes, thank you. Today, I'm here to ask for recommendation for Colinex for Ocoee Middle School for two serving lines. For serving lines for Ocoee Middle.
Are these two additions? Okay, if I ask a question now?
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry.
Yes.
Are these two additional serving lines, or is this replacing?
Replacing, correct, serving lines. Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion to award the bid to Colinex for food service equipment at Ocoee Middle School?
I make that motion to approve her bid.
Okay, Mr. Bryson made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Lovinggood?
Yes, ma'am.
Has the second? Discussion? Any further questions? Now, I would like for you to explain about the level of the counters or the serving lines.
Yes, the serving line is at an elementary level. And so, as students come through, it is very low and actual for our employees to serve. It's very hard on their backs to be able to serve. And so we are moving them to other schools, and so, and getting them the proper size.
So like moving those to another elementary, to an elementary school, from a middle school?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero, no, motion passes.
Thank you. Corbett Drew, Waterville Modular Additional Site Work.
The modulars, the learning cottages. Sorry, the learning, the, yes. It requires a little bit of site work to prep a pad, and to make all the connections for water, and sewer, and power, and fire alarm. And so, we bid that, the low bid came, the low bid came from Shady Valley Construction Company for $182,680, and recommending that we move forward with them.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the Waterville Learning Cottage Addition. What's that word?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kason. Any discussions or questions? I know we did talk about this during the work session. Anything else?
How many are there?
There'll be two classrooms.
Will that, Amanda, that won't take care of that number though, will it?
I'm taking what I can get, Mr. Bryson. Taking what I can get, Mr. Bryson.
I didn't know, but it won't take care of it.
Hits my comment prior. Hits my prior comment.
Okay, Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero, no, motion passes.
Our next item, or did we, did we do the lease? We haven't done the lease. You're 14 now. Our next item, Corbett? You sat down, so you threw me off? It's approval of the Waterville Community Elementary School cottage lease?
This is for the actual lease of the actual modular building. And it's through a TIPS contractor, and we've fully negotiated everything with Scott Bennett's blessing to reduce the term to a 12-month renewable, as long as we need it. And Scott Bennett has blessed the terms and conditions that we've gotten to. So if there are any questions about the lease itself, have to fill those.
I've got a question, no, but.
Okay.
Amanda was talking about that we kind of changed, whatever. The two cottages, whatever you want to call it, if they're way over, we're not with those other, had we considered doing more of those? I'm just asking.[1723.94]
I'm just asking, I don't know, if that won't solve the problem?
Ms. Beatty?
Yes, ma'am.
Currently, the two classes will allow them to accommodate what's currently there. But moving forward, we would need to reevaluate and see where we are.
Either add more or build, fix, build up.
Right, well.
Or build or whatever.
Building new schools, yeah. Any further discussion or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the Waterville Community Elementary Cottage Modular Lease.
I have a motion by Ms. Lee, do I have a second?
My second.
Dr. Lovinggood, Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no motion passes.
Our next item, annual agenda and calendar, Dr. Linda Cash.
What you have before you is just your annual calendar for the board. It is based on the number of meetings that you would have. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to look at that calendar for you. But it is the general calendar that we approve every year for meetings.
Do I have a motion to approve the annual calendar and, or the annual agenda and board calendar for 2425?
Make a motion to approve the board calendar for 2425.
I have a motion by Mr. Taylor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kason, any discussion or questions?
Just one thing, I just was pulling up and reviewing that one more time. It looks like, it says the 2425 board meeting. However, the first meeting says August 8, 2023. It looks like the dates are still 2023 and 2024 for the dates. So maybe we just need to amend that, just to change it to the 2020, 2425 dates.
Okay, with that amendment?
No, you just wanna approve it with the changes suggested.
Okay, oh.
So I need to make a new motion?
You need to make an amendment?
Do you wanna make with the changes suggested?
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we approve the 2425 board calendar, agenda calendar with the noted changes.
And I'm assuming the second? Who's seconded before? Jeff Lovinggood. Nancy.
Yes.
Nancy seconded.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no motion passes.
Now we are moving to the item approval to purchase property for a future middle school and the property on Dry Valley.
Letter of intent.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Dr. Cash of people going into a letter of intent to buy property next to Walker Valley and is it Dry Valley Road?
Yes.
Drive that way.
Both, our schools are growing faster than we keep up with. All you gotta do is look out. We're talking about doing Blue Springs. Those other two will help to meet our needs now and in the near future. So I make a motion we approve that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the letter of intent for a future middle school and a future elementary school.
My second.
And we have a second by Ms. Kason. Any discussion, further discussion?
So just to reiterate what Mr. Bryson said, so this is a motion for both pieces?
Both.
Okay.
The middle school and the elementary school Dry Valley and the Walker Valley property. Any other questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no motion passes.
Announcements. All Bradley County schools will be closed and offices will be closed June the 19th, 2024. July the 18th through the 20th is the summer law conference for school board members. August the 1st, teachers return and it's Bradley County Schools Opening Assembly. August the 6th, students return with an abbreviated date. August the 8th is the next regular board meeting. July the 29th is the joint meeting with Cleveland City, Bradley County, and the Public Foundation. And I would be remiss if I did not mention again